So hello, everybody. This is I'm Catherine Heber and I'm chairman of the What hello, everybody. Okay, Catherine Heber, Chairman of the Sustainable Bethel Commission. It is a little after seven o'clock and we can pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So are there any responses or emails or comments? Public comments?
Yes.
So a lot going on in the world, a lot going on in the microcosm and the macrocosm. And, you know, I'm interested, I haven't been here for a few meetings, so I want to know kind of catch up on what you guys are doing. I am especially interested in the food scrap program because I haven't thought about it once since I left that meeting where the food scrap lady came. And, I mean, I think it's great. I mean, I have friends who do it and I just, I don't know, I don't think I could. And, you know, electric cars and stuff, I kind of want to know what you're planning or if you have any leanings towards installing charging stations and all that. And and you had a kiosk or you had some kind of setup at the pride parade and I didn't know if you had anything at the memorial. I didn't know if you had anything there. And I didn't see any representation. Because we only have two parades. So how many parades do we have, Billy?
We have no more of it.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's it.
So, yeah, I'm just just here to Anything else, Cynthia? Okay, thank you.
Oh, Billy Michael, 27 and happy with that. You know, of course, I was coming to paint, you know, I just have certainly locked into everything that talks about social equity and long-term resilience. These words, like words can mean anything to anybody. But I just wanted to put in the public record that there is this pushback now. And John Geer and Microsoft this week got rid of their DEI. They got rid of it. They canceled out DEI. And it shocked me that in this world that there is a change. There's a pushback. That's all I wanted to be on record. This is saying that there's something changed.
Thank you, Billy. Okay, Chairman, comments. The first selectman is still trying to recruit for not only the Sustainable Bethel Commission, but for other committee vacancies. And if anybody knows anybody that is interested along your journeys and your paths, let me know. That would be really helpful. I wanted to mention to you about the Community Match Fund, the Sustainable Connecticut Community Match Fund. That the relationship with the Bethel Arts is moving forward. They will be going, I introduced them to the State of Connecticut, so they understood about how this process works. So things are moving along and advancing, which is awesome. They plan on coming here in September to give a presentation on the status and also launching the sculpture installation the same day as Earth Day next year, which is April 26. So that's pretty exciting to get some dollars here into our town of Bethel through Bethel Arts. And if there's any other organization or individual that you think of that would like to participate in a community, the Community Match Fund, let's talk to them. No, it doesn't have to be just one organization. Okay, because they will match up to $15,000, which is a nice chunk of change.
Seventy-five thousand, seventy-five hundred.
Right, seventy-five hundred, right. So it's a total, right, exactly, I said it wrong. Yeah, so that's a nice chunk of change to come to Bethel and foreign organizations. I want to follow up on the partnership with education. I met with a professor of biology at WestCon and we will be meeting with the department heads of the Integrated Biology Department because they have grant funds for graduate students to do, I'm going to say a capstone project. It's something else. It's called, it's called something else in their world. But this would be a really great partnership for the town of Bethel to look at. Really, what is the impact of climate change to the green economy, to the economic development, to community development? Now, I'm talking very high level here, but it's something, if we can work out a project, we can drill that down and that would be very useful data and information for the town of Bethel to use down the road. I also will be meeting with a tenured professor from UConn, similar to this collaboration with WestCon. So I'll keep you guys posted. There, I want to let you know also, WestCOG, the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, they're offering micro grants to municipalities related to bike and pedestrian safety. Typically, grants are state and federal grants, which are large capital dollars and investments for infrastructure and capital projects. These are micro grants, up to $5,000, related again to the safety of bike and pedestrian type of initiatives. The one that kind of interested me was a bike and pedestrian training, safety training program. So if somebody is interested in something like that, let me know. The grant is, those grants are up to $5,000 and there's several of them. WestCOG, Western Connecticut State of Governments are offering micro grants for that purpose. The Bethel Chamber of Commerce, as you know, will be having their shop and stroll this Saturday from 11 to 4:00. Kelly and I will be participating and we will be sharing a table with the Chamber of Commerce. So that is what I have for my report specifically. Are there any questions or comments? Yes.
The micro grant from the WestCOG. When we did our walk audit, we had a lot of people mentioning like a specific crosswalk intersection, that there was a light out. Is that something like we could fund replacement of the light?
Not replace, no, that's a capital project. So the walk audit, the town can use the data that we're, we will be giving them to then put together a grant application to do something like that. This is for like a training program or bike helmets or safety vest. So those, you know, those kind of operational type of purchases and creating some type of training program, which would tie into what we're doing now also. Anything else? No? Okay. All right, so we have two minutes, two minutes here to approve. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the June 19, 2024 meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry, who was the second?
Oh, second is Dana. Was everybody here last June? Okay, so Peter wasn't here and who was, oh, Sunny is, okay, so. Okay, we can, all in favor? Okay. And then the other one is, do I hear a motion to approve the April 17, 2024 minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I think everybody was here for that, right?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi. Excuse me. Oh, so Catherine, Kelly, Sunny and Peter are abstaining from the vote.
Okay.
For June.
Yes, for June because they weren't here. Okay, so next in the agenda, Commissioner reports. I want to just give a brief overview or status of where we are with our certification and then I'm going to hand it over to Gabriella for any details. So our application is about 99.9% complete. We've gotten very, yay! It was some, it was quite the journey, ups and downs and challenges, but we are just about complete with it. We have received very good feedback from the new leadership of the at Sustainable Connecticut. We will be incorporating into that. We're also, we've also met with the fellows and they have reviewed the application. They had some comments and we've incorporated those into the application as well. So we were, we will be able to, I don't know what that is. Okay, we can read it. Yeah. Okay, love technology, right? So the application is for 2024, for the fall, is due August 20th and we are planning on submitting at the, hopefully at the end of July. No, no, it's 20th. They changed it.
Oh.
Yeah, but we're going to submit way in advance of that. And I want to give a big shout out and thank you to a whole bunch of people. So a big shout out to Gabriella for really putting the effort in and writing and drafting the toolkit with all of the data that we had. It took a lot and she did a fabulous job. And also to Kelly and to Gabriella for organizing the walk audit, which we used for the toolkit. That was a big deal. And then I want to thank everybody else involved, even though if it was little, it didn't matter. Everybody had something to do with getting to this point. So thank you. This was a big deal. This was a priority and it was a big deal and we're almost done. And I am, fingers crossed, but I am, I'm going to say pretty sure that we will receive a bronze certification for the town of Bethel. So it will be a good, an amazing accomplishment. They will have an award ceremony in the fall, which is the, it's the bigger one of the two. They have also one in the spring and everybody will be invited to that as well. And expecting the first selectman to be there as well. I also want to thank all the support from the first selectman's office and all the town departments who helped us with all of the information that we needed for the application. And then all the outside organizations that we spoke to in this amazing journey that makes Bethel this incredible place to live, work and play. So to name a few, the Bethel Land Trust, Bethel Arts, the Chamber, the Board of Ed, the Pace Group and HRA, and I'm sure I'm missing a whole bunch of stuff. So that's what I have on Sustainable Connecticut. Did you want to add anything?
That pretty much covers where we're at, unless somebody has specific details about anything in particular. We, you know, uploaded things, edited the format, took their feedback, changed some things around. Ultimately, did a lot of searching online and screenshots and linking and all that good stuff. But the certification action categories look good and the feedback has been relatively minimal. So we are looking very positively to the submission process. And in terms of the toolkit itself, it took a lot of effort. It took a long time. It took a lot of effort. It was a lot of research and just like, you know, aggregate of information that we as a commission have been doing since our inception in 2021, 22 and 23 and this year as well. So all of the different interactions and engagements that we've had with residents directly during events or while we were walking around promoting and firing for the Bethel Walk Audit and just in general informing the town and its residents of what we've been doing, all the different initiatives and programs that we've been highlighting and documenting. So all of that effort that's happening in the town of Bethel is really just captured in a nice snapshot of this moment in history for the town. And there's a lot of efforts going on and there's a lot of efforts of very small groups or individual people doing a great, a ton of great work for the residents of our town. And knowing that our efforts to do the Bethel Walk Audit and just in general, doing the sustainable work, centering, you know, the different perspectives that are part of our town, whether they're new, old, whatever the case may be, historically disenfranchised or typically included in history. All of those perspectives are important to, you know, capture and document and share out to what, what we can do as a town in order to improve safety, improve walkability, sustainability and all of the things that we've encountered residents want with their tax dollars. So, yeah, I'm really proud of us. So thank you all for the effort and support and hopefully it'll work.
Yeah, that's. Thank you, Catherine, for taking the lead and doing a lot of that work. Appreciate both of you. I do have one question. I know you guys have gotten great feedback up until this point. Will there be a little bit of a gap, say something, you know, is missing or something that, you know, will that get kicked back another six months? Or do you feel like the feedback we've gotten up until this point is really going to just send the application forward?
I feel like the feedback is going to send the application forward. Yes, because we got feedback.
We're doing it now, basically.
Yeah, that's what we're, yeah, we didn't submit until we got, until we got that feedback several times. Yeah, we got feedback from the new leadership of Sustainable Connecticut and the fellows. So we're pretty much there in a good way, a very good way. So, yep, heavy lift, but you know, just like everything else in municipal government, you just have to kind of keep going forward.
Oh, that's something to add. So in particular, for the walk audit itself and what that means within our town, not for the certification process. I'm still working on the summary report of all of the nine walk audits that were completed by town resident volunteers in addition to one bike audit. So we're, you know, I'm compiling all of that so that there's a summary report that includes what we did, how we did it, but also the possible solutions and suggested recommended path of action in terms of the different agencies within the municipal government here in Bethel with the local traffic authority being the Bethel Police Department and with the Connecticut Department of Transportation, since Stony Hill Road is in fact Route 6, which is a state road. So all of that collaboration is going to be part of whatever possible solutions the town decides. So hopefully that summary report will be a great starting point or proposal or just jumping off point to embark on that process.
Or the start of a grant application for that, right? Anybody else? Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything on Earth Day that you want to mention? Yes. Okay.
For next year? Yeah.
Start it in the fall, right, versus next spring, right?
Oh, I mean, we kind of talked about it already.
Yeah, we should.
Framing my mind to next year.
It'll be a consistent, you know, that's. Electric vehicle chargers. Peter, I know you've been traveling all over the world like you normally do.
All over the US.
What?
All over the US.
Okay, US this time, okay. So I'll bring everybody up to speed on where we're at. All right. We're working with the town team and some of our vendors partnerships to come up with a systemic approach. The Keon Energy Company has been in Bethel for about a year. They're an international company. Their headquarters in the United States is in Boston, but they have landed in our wonderful town of Bethel for their R&amp;D and assembly of electric vehicle chargers, which is really cool. So we're working with the town and coming up with locations to install electric vehicle chargers in strategically located areas. And but also looking at a long-term plan and a systemic approach to all of this. So when Peter and I went out for RFI, there is a company in the state of Connecticut called Titan Energy and they work with companies like Keon and other electric vehicle charging companies that put these units together. They're like a planning component of the whole system. And I introduced them to Keon and also to the town and we will be working with them to come up with a plan. So but the plan will be between Keon and Titan and of course, we'll be involved with that. The other really cool thing is that Keon is, has these innovation centers around the world called SuperCool. They're like innovation hubs and they will be opening, they're planning on opening one here in Bethel as well, right near where their operation is. So they're, they were looking for investors. I have introduced them to the Green Bank because this is a green type of initiative. And the Green Bank dollars, which are the C-Pace dollars, they fund things like the green, to develop green buildings, electric vehicle chargers, solar, battery storage. So work in progress, but happening still. So this is all really good news, you know, that they landed in Bethel, which is pretty awesome.
So what's the location?
It's a, did I, oh my gosh, they are at a corporate park, the, which one? Yeah, I think so.
What's the name of the company?
Keon, K-I-O-N. Yeah, you can look at, yeah, they're on. So that's really great news. Any comments related other than that, anything?
So are they already?
They're already here. They're, yeah, they're already here. Yeah, they've been here about a year. Yep. It's really awesome for Bethel. It really is. And the innovation center, that's really a priority for the state of Connecticut, all the innovation hubs all over. This is really going to be awesome. It's just going to provide so much opportunity for everybody.
Question. So what's their goal versus Titan?
They actually make them. They make the units. Titan does not make anything. No. They're the, they're the designers. They come up with a systemic approach and the plan. We need a plan that not only includes the installation of EV chargers right now, but midterm, long-term and how that works in a systemic approach with other renewable energy sources. So as well as looking at, yeah, public credit partnerships because a lot of these are obviously in parking spaces. The town owns parking, so but it's limited. Most of the parking, a lot of the parking is private. So how do we create those relationships for a public-private type of, you know, I guess, operation? So that's yet to be seen, but that's a bigger, big picture of planning. Okay. Peter, do you have anything?
Just was down in Washington DC. Fifty-four million dollar grant applications closed yesterday for communities taking charge that fund the very infrastructure and related projects.
So that's, yeah, that's something that we, I'm sure Titan knows about it, but something definitely we will bring up.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was more for companies to do and organizations to do demonstration projects. And Calstart was involved, Clean Cities, USDOT, the Joint Office. And it all ran through the state's DOT stuff.
Okay. Good to know. So I don't, I think the utility companies have pulled back some of their grants, from what I understand. Peter, do you know anything about that?
Everything coming out of Washington right now is a match. So if you don't have the money and no one wants to match these days, it's kind of strange. Watch five projects fall by the wayside because no one had the money. So they're not funding startups. They're funding existing companies with new ideas.
Okay, so Keon could, well, Keon couldn't fall into that category.
Yeah, they would have been ideal for it. It closed yesterday.
Okay, that's good to know. All right, very good to know. Anything else on the EV chargers? Okay, great. Solar?
Solar, I need to be have the venue for the events to be conducted in September. Okay. Two dates. I can share that, take it off the top of my head. So there was a bit of back and forth. Actually, we had a venue at the line. Everything at the line, we went into freeze for the fall. And so now we have two dates event for September, I believe it's 12th and, no, actually 13th at 27. And now that that is cleared, I will be initiating communications with vendors as well as town residents to move forward with it. I have all the material ready and sitting. I was just waiting for finalization of venue. So I'll take it.
So what science is doing is putting together a panel of experts to talk about the value and benefits for residents to install solar.
Are you going to speak, is there a section where you touch upon like battery and storage and stuff like that?
Yeah, I will be inviting also relatives. If any of you know anyone, that's pretty cool. You think I should participate? I know there's one in town. I forget the name of the company. I mean, I don't know them personally, but they were present at one of the previous events. And I didn't get their contact information.
Power, is it the power of people?
I believe so.
Power, yeah. Yeah, they're here. Yeah, they are. Yeah, they're here in Bethel. Yeah.
So that's when I can.
That's great.
And so I will be inviting your story, yes, because I think that's an important component
Oh, yeah.
of generating, especially this past week without the like we'd have been making bank with the storage. But, yeah, if you guys know anyone, just please let me know. But it'll be a broad range of vendors and we know specific, everyone in solar installation. Again, I know a few people from the time that we ran it before the pandemic. I still have contact numbers, all three of them. But I want to like expand it out just so, you know, as much participation as possible, as possible. So you get ones that's out. I mean, I'll take your head, like push it through the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, once you get it organized, we'll get all that done. Yep.
They said it was going to be at the library, right?
No.
No, it's in a faculty, the GP room.
Here.
Yeah. And for that day, I might require some help and volunteering as we get closer every night.
Absolutely. So you think it's the 27th or the?
13th and 27th.
13th and 27th, okay.
Looking for two sessions, just in case some folks can make it one day. We have two options.
And it would be like a 5 o'clock or 5:30?
Five thirty.
Uh huh, okay.
To 8 o'clock.
Okay.
So giving calls was a little bit upset of time. Let everyone group in, start at around 6ish, go on at 7:30 and then clean up another three minutes.
Okay.
So 6 to 7:30 would be the main event, I'm hoping.
Okay, great. Awesome. Okay. Polar pathways?
You think I'm on your end?
So I had reached out to Amy quite a while ago, a week, two ago. She got back to me today. We're going to schedule a meeting for next week. I don't know if anybody wants to talk or anything. But I'm going to meet with her next weekend and discuss like kind of where we go, how that we have our list, what other organizations we cooperate with.
Yeah.
Kind of make the ball roll on its own. I don't necessarily envision Sustainable Bethel as like leading the push forever, just kind of getting it started. So.
When is that we do?
Not set up yet.
Oh.
Would you like to go?
I mean, next week probably is going to be really tough for me and I'm going to be away the week after, but generally. So I guess.
I'll let you know when.
Yeah, whatever you set up, so let me know if I can make it.
So, yeah, this is really good because there are a lot of groups that do this in Bethel. So, yeah, this is really good, because there are a lot of groups that do this in Bethel, but nobody knows about it. So there could be one central location, and things can get connected in that way. That would, that's really what, what we should be, exactly what you said, what we should be doing, yeah.
And just to clarify, Jamie's the representative for Polar Pathways, the organization, right?
Correct.
Got it.
She actually lives in Bethel, so.
And she was, she was standing at the table, wasn't she, representing the organization, okay.
Great, thank you.
Anything else on Polar Pathways? No? So I have the survey on here, which is fine. I have asked, I want to be able to push it out more often on our social media and any other marketing material. We, we did get about 30 responses from the events that we participated in, so that was good. That's a, it's decent enough. But to the extent that we can push it out more and get people to just take it online would be really great. So I, I do the surveys. It's just a survey we're, to, that people can fill out online, it takes literally, what, one minute, about how they see Sustainable Bethel, what, what are their thoughts about it? I'm, I'll, you know what, I'll send you the link, and so anything you can do, that'd be great.
Let's just make a suggestion as we put it out there. I know we're representing and at the tabling, and we're getting responses, but I think the ask and the description on how we're asking people could be maybe a little bit stronger.
Yep.
Perhaps like we could really use your help. We have a need, just, you know, if we're really seeking more people, putting something out there versus having a statement and a really strong message as far as the quote-unquote the ask of what we're asking of them, could potentially help.
That's a good point.
Yep, I'm confused, sorry. You mean like clarifying, like the spiel about the survey, or?
Yeah, so anytime you ask somebody, the ask could be, no, the ask, what do we need from the?
Fill out my survey for the survey.
We've seen it come across social media, and perhaps it just goes by the way that I've seen it before, but having a strong ask, which is that statement to say, we really need your help. We could really use your help to strengthen what we do here at the commission. That statement, the ask, is just a way to engage people by having a stronger, stronger language.
Okay.
Or a different language. Just a nonprofit piece.
Yeah. It's a good point.
You're talking about like the wording on like the post.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else about the survey? Okay, I do have something under other business. Does anybody else have anything under other business? Okay, so I'm suggesting that we cancel August, because it's the summer, and I think it's a good time to take the month of August off, regroup, and come back fresh in September, which I have done most of my career with all the commissions and committees and the stories that I've staffed. We always took August off, and I think that's, it's just, it's kind of, for, for me, it kind of worked out, and for all of them too. So before we vote on this, because it's on the agenda, there is a process, but I would like to know if that, if everybody feels the same way.
My only question would be for the event in September, is that going to, in fact, can that be handled all through email communication?
It can be done through.
So I made a study.
Right, because you only need to request like volunteers or that kind of, okay. So there's no business really for us to do for anything. Anybody else? Yeah, yeah. Okay. So anybody else? Are you, everybody okay with canceling August meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so to do that, we need a motion to suspend the rules. So do I hear a motion to suspend the rules? Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so now I need a motion to vote on approving to cancel the Sustainable Bethel Commission's meeting in August. Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, so the next meeting?
When was it again, September what? 18.
Okay. Okay, so anything, sure, anything else? Because now I won't see you guys till September. Well, I'll see you soon. Okay, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor? Have a great rest this summer. We'll see you in September. Oh, that's a song.